Great dinner, thank you very much. Always one of my favorite meals, Thanksgiving, Christmas, Easter, Cleveland. Also, congratulations to all of our students as well as drama director Jennifer Schant for an outstanding performance of Father of the Right. The Red Hawk Regiment marching band performed at the Carrier Dome on Sunday, October 27th. They placed six in the large school division outscoring Popegg High School. This year's field band numbered ninety-five students, it is a very young group with only fourteen seniors, they did an outstanding job and we are all very proud of them. The football team ended up ranked number ten in the Central New York High School Football Media Poll for large schools after starting the season at zero five. A lot of injuries and they overcame a lot of adversity and are a very proud team also. Congratulations to all of our fall teams that qualified for sectional play, boys golf, girls tennis, boys soccer, football, girls volleyball, boys and girls cross-country, and gymnastics. The following students earned a performing seat in the area All-State Ensembles. This is based on their spring dismal auditions. Junior High Area All-State Band Julia Georges, Katie Fuller, Erin McGritchy. Senior High All-State Band Bethany Crips, Michael Lane, Lily Roach, Ben Moore, Carlene Assarian, and Cole Brookins. High School Area All-State Orchestra Felicia Astraskey, Kyle McAfee, Tony Stewart, and Matthew Gettle. Senior High All-Area Chorus Harley Osgood, Raquel Hop, Kelly Buck, and Jacob Fidelli. Laura Lee, a whole teacher, was representative from the Special Olympics and was awarded the Hometown Hero Award at the Carrier Dome. And again, she was a representative from the Special Olympics and a whole staff member. The Central Square School District faculty and family and community members participated in making strides against breast cancer walk on Sunday, October 20th, raised over twenty-three hundred dollars in cash and online donations to benefit the American Cancer Society. The Board of Education had a workshop with our district consolidation consultant Dr. Sbersky last Wednesday evening. The purpose of the work session was to create a written document by the board and the superintendent that will guide the focus of the study. This written document is valuable in engaging community and staff discussions regarding the short-range and long-range future efforts of the school district. It was a great start. Lori Wood and Lynda Goine and myself have registered to attend Thursday night's Commissioner King's Common Core Program and WCNY. We're waiting to hear if we've ever received a seat in there. That'll also be posted up on our webpage if anyone else is interested in registering for that. Also, we have received, as we've heard at previous board meetings, concern over the data portal security. I would like everyone to know that we have voiced our concern with State Ed. State Ed has said that they will address the concerns and will be issuing a guidance memo soon in regards to the security of data that is going to be put up on the Engage New York portal. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Moving on to open board forum. Do you have any more members, if you have anything that they'd like to...
Just one comment, Joe, that will be all information from Dr. Sbersky's on the website as well. It will continue, I think. Yes. Yeah, thank you.
I would just like to comment a couple things about a week and a half ago. So I went to the career expo at the high school and I knew over seventy members there. Students were able to come down and to prove the difference between different vendors and get information that they have a career choice, they might have bags, so I just went to the career expo, Dan Talons, Mr. King, and the rest of the staff there for that. Also, it was a Halloween day. I think it was through student government, but also Mr. King, even though was their motivational speaker, and I thought he did an excellent job. Kids, I know my own daughter came home and was quite impressed with the things that he had to say, so just want to thank everybody at the high school for bringing these opportunities to the kids because I think it's important as we make them college and career ready.
Anybody else? You can give your cards, bro. Your little cards? Okay. We will now move back to the Board of Education. This spotlight at Cleveland Elementary.
Much better. Good evening, everybody, welcome to Cleveland Elementary. I recognize many of the faces out there, but I'm Michael Smolinger, I'm the principal here at Cleveland Elementary. Tonight, we're going to be presenting on a topic that's very dear and dear to many of us, both at Cleveland and the Central Square School District, enhancing academics through character-based programs. For those of you who are unaware, a large part of this presentation is going to revolve around the recent accomplishment and recognition of Cleveland Elementary as a national school of character. We're going to chronicle the journey that we took to get there, why we feel both in the Cleveland, both at Cleveland Elementary as well as in the school district, why we feel it's important, what does it look like, and how did we achieve many of the things we've been able to achieve. First, the why of character education. Obviously, the district mission statement of empowering students to excel as citizens in a changing world. A lot of this comes down to that foundational knowledge, the building blocks, the moral fiber of the students, and that's what we really strive to instill in our kids here at Cleveland. It also falls in line with Mr. Menards' as well as Board of Education goals in terms of maintaining a rigorous academic program while also having that culture of caring, excuse me, and communication. One of the sayings we go by is "Know thyself." Prior to my appointment at Cleveland Elementary, I worked at the high school for ten years, and one of the most influential things I ever heard out of a student's mouth was a ninth grader's mouth. Zach told me one time, he said, "Mike," oh, he didn't say "Mike," he said, "Mr. Smolinger." Just remember, when you're pointing a finger, not that I was the one pointing a finger, there are three-pointing manageters. So we've taught our kids, our staff members, our parents, our community members, to really look within inside oneself, make sure that you are the person you want your kids to be, you are the person you want your students to be, and you are the person most importantly that you want to be. How have we built success? It's one relationship at a time. There are a lot of faces in the crowd that yes, I do recognize, there are some that I do not. Okay? It's seeking out those outside resources. The community here has embraced me wholeheartedly and I thank them for that. Finally, we operate on the premise of what is best for the child. That's the reason we're here, and it's not solely based on academics. We're looking at the whole child, and again, we want that moral fiber, we want our students leaving with that strong bent on that good moral and ethical character. What does this look like in school? Three things that we focus on. Our score turned up last week, we traveled to Washington DC for the National Forum on Character Education, and three staff members from Cleveland Elementary were able to present with me, and we focused on these three things. First, a cultural change. Second is the instructional practice, and finally, that whole-school connection. Priority goes far as the whole-school-community connection that exists here at Cleveland Elementary. In terms of cultural change, gone is the ego. Gone is the sense of entitlement. It is we, it is not me, it is us before I, a child in place of ego. We start every day with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will spoken the Character Education pledge immediately after the pledge tonight because out of habit, we recite the pledge in those are the words that we live by and we try our best to live up to on a daily basis. Do things such as a school chair with the help of our cheerleading squad from a couple years back to instill a sense of pride in our students and in our staff. And finally, who do we represent as something that we promote with our students? No matter where you're going, and I said it as recently as this afternoon to the kids during our gathering, no matter where you're going, what you're doing, understand that everything you do, you represent Cleveland Elementary. There is a lot of good at Cleveland Elementary, there's a lot of good in Central Square Schools. Why do I know this? I'm a proud of Central Square Schools myself, as are many of us in this room. In terms of our instructional practice, some of you may or may not refer to Ralph Singh's Wisdom Thinkers, the stories to learn our ways. These are stories, folktales, that we weave into our teaching every day. Some of the teachers use them, drop them in during morning work, some teachers might work them into their ELA block. I know all of the subs worked really hard in fifth grade to align a lot of the stories with the Common Core standards. We've piloted Ralph's stories to learn our ways, this is growing into a national movement. He recently presented at the Central Europe School Boards Association, and he also presented in Washington DC with us. Additionally, believe in service learning. Service learning is not merely community service, but it's tying that community service to some aspect of the curriculum. Dedication, commitment, and investment of character education faculty and staff. What I'm going to do, I'm sort of jumping around a bit here, I'm going to present the, this is what CDP, Character Education Partnerships, most recent edition of Schools of Character. The article that features Cleveland Elementary is entitled "Going the Extra Mile." Okay? This is something, this is what I'd like to share with Board of Education, and it really epitomizes what we try to do here at Cleveland Elementary in terms of going the extra mile. And finally, the full-fledged support of the district administration and the Board of Education. Without the support of central office administration and the Board of Ed, a lot of the things that we do here would not be possible, so I want to publicly thank both groups for that. One of the greatest things about Cleveland Elementary is the connection that they've managed to establish and maintain with the community members out here. Before I go any further, I know we've got quite a few community members in here who are instrumental in us achieving the national school of character status. At this time, I ask that all staff members, students, either former, current, and community members, please stand to be recognized. Thank you very much. These people have really are the fiber that holds us together because without the community's support, the school wouldn't be nearly where it is today. So I'm going to publicly thank them. We've also got a little token of our appreciation in the band, we've got some cake to celebrate a little bit, and we certainly appreciate the support of everybody along our journey. We've been able to establish and maintain meaningful relationships with so many of these people, which has led to us being a community center of school. I look at the building use calendar, and actually, I sat down with two individuals this afternoon who were fighting over, not fighting physically, but they were debating who has rights to our gymnasium. Really, you know, we're somewhat geographically isolated school, okay, there's no question about that. This is the hub of the community. We house things like the Boy Scouts, the North Shore Soccer Program, the North Shore Agricultural Food Pantry, things that without the school simply would not exist in this community as we know them today. We promote service learning, and again, it's not just the community service aspect of it, it's linking that community service to some aspect of the curriculum. School atmosphere, and I mentioned this when I asked people to stand, I said, "Not just current students, but also like former students to stand." It's not limited to current students. We recently got our harvest fest, and I guess one of the most heartwarming things is, you don't just see students K through five, you see the sixth graders, the seventh graders, the eighth graders, the high schoolers that come back to provide that community service. Those are the Cleveland kids who are giving back because they've got a normal, normal sense of pride in their community and in their school. And finally, a word that can be somewhat taboo in education, it's love, and that's what it comes down to, it's one of those four letters, all right? And it's love about the parents, the families, the community, and the school. Now, where does this take us, or what does this look like, excuse me? Home visits. All right? Something that, we did some home visits when I was at the high school. Home visits are a regular occurrence here. Okay? We become an advocate for the family. Service condo, we link people up with services that some days sometimes might not necessarily know exist. And kudos to my staff who goes above and beyond on a daily basis to support this and make this happen. We open our doors with the community resource room. Some of our parents don't have internet access, we give them an internet access and a computer to use. We're visible. That pool, no matter what you're doing, where you are, your everything Cleveland goes for our staff just as well as our students because we're role models. We believe in educating the whole child, and finally, Mr. Menard, we got breaking bread. We break bread with our Board of Ed members, we sit down and dine with them as an annual tradition up here at Cleveland, and certainly, we invite parents at all times to sit down, have a cup of coffee, made us out of TJ's perhaps, grabs on the knee, and just sit down and talk about what's best for our students. Now, the results. The results are announced, and obviously, there's a close connection between the character education foundation that we've provided here at Cleveland and the academic success. I didn't count them, but at last check, there's approximately one hundred and thirty-three thousand schools in the United States. Cleveland had the Blue Ribbon Award bestowed upon them in 2010, one of three hundred and four U.S. Department of Education Blue Ribboned Schools for Academic Excellence. An astounding low number of twenty-nine schools received national school of character status in 2013. And then, Mrs. Cochrane, where are you, Mrs. Cochrane, in the back? Thank you for being my researcher these past couple of days. Cleveland Elementary currently holds the two highest accolades in the nation academically and culturally. We sat down and researched this, only forty-one other schools in the nation accomplished this feat in the past twenty years. And I'm very proud to say, not only are we the only national school of character, the state school of character this year from New York State, we're the only school with both national awards in the past twenty years from New York State. So congratulations to Cleveland Elementary. Cleveland has and continues to put Central Square School District on the map. This has been recognized by many of our local, state, and federal political figures, as well as many of the role models that we hold near and dear to ourselves. Without any further ado, I want to invite the mayor of Cleveland, Norman Bealman, up to the microphone to read a proclamation on behalf of the Village of Cleveland. Norman?
First, I'd like to congratulate our school for being recognized as a school of character. They set the standard for our community, and to say that we're proud of the school will be an understatement to anybody involved around the school. That I'd like to be a pro thing, whereas Cleveland Elementary Education strives each and every day to get the most from their students, and most importantly, ensure that they leave their school with a solid moral foundation. Whereas National School of Character fosters more academic growth, these are nurturing, educational communities that support parents in their most important jobs, raising kids. Whereas Cleveland Elementary was recognized as 2013 New York State School of Character and is a lone school to receive New York State School of Character status for 2013, and is the only one of twenty-nine schools nationwide to receive the National School of Character status. Now, therefore, I, Norman Bealman, mayor of the Village of Cleveland, am hereby proclaiming November fourth, 2013, as the National School of Character Day.
Thank you, Norman. Senator Patty Richi also touched base with us. Whereas in 2013, twenty-nine schools and districts across the country were added to Character Education Partnerships roster of national schools of character, all recognized for their commitment to character education and for fostering a positive environment for social and academic learning. Whereas schools selected as national schools of character demonstrate growth in terms of academics, behavior, and climate. Whereas, through its adherence to the eleven principles of effective character education and the belief in the power of positive attitude as a core value system, Cleveland Elementary has created a school environment characterized by pride, trust, and love, resulting in it being the only school from New York State named as a national school of character in 2013. Whereas, being named a national school of character, Cleveland Elementary School is building upon its past honors, including being named in 2010 U.S. DOE Blue Ribboned School, making it New York State's highest performance schools list. Therefore, be it resolved that by committing themselves to transforming their school's culture and climate, Cleveland Elementary School, faculty, staff, students, and families have created much more than just a school, but also a caring, supportive center for learning that goes above and beyond to meet the needs of those who attend the school, laying the groundwork for future success. Being further resolved, and as a newly elected member of the New York State Senate, I hereby proclaim that Cleveland Elementary School has served its community, the best tradition of the Empire State, deserves our thanks and appreciation. Senator Patty Richi, New York State Senate, Forty-Eighth and Seventh District. And from the federal level, I did call the White House last week, Barack hasn't called back. However, Chuck Schumer's office has graciously communicated with our school. Whereas on the Fourth of November in the year 2013, Cleveland Elementary School, Cleveland New York, will be recognized as a 2013 New York State School of Character and one of twenty-nine schools recognized as a national school of character, highlighting its achievements to foster nurture and academic environments that foster parental engagement for children across New York State. And whereas Cleveland Elementary is one of twenty-nine schools in the United States recognized as the National School of Character, as remarkable as this achievement is, this achievement is, the journey Cleveland Elementary School took to achieve its accolades is even more extraordinary. In less than seven years, Cleveland Elementary School went from a family school to United States Department of Education Blue Ribboned School. And whereas Cleveland Elementary School followed the eleven principles of effective character education through which families and educators build unbreakable bodies to ensure the success of its pupils, supportive schooling, outstanding educators, and a belief in the positive reinforcement are contributing factors to the success of Cleveland Elementary School. And whereas teachers and school administrators committed to instill leadership and provide resources for the community, Cleveland students and families have developed students to ethical citizens, contributing to the betterment of the Cleveland community, New Yorkers, and all people. I applaud the hard work and that fast devotion that faculty and Cleveland Elementary School administrators have shown for our students and the school, and will continue to demonstrate to students in the future. And whereas, I know that Cleveland Elementary School will continue to be an institution of educational excellence for years to come, and therefore, be it known that I, Senator Charles E. Schumer, am hereby recognizing and celebrating where those gathered today to congratulate Cleveland Elementary School on its recognition as a 2013 New York State School of Character. Its commitment to education and to foster positive environment for children to learn is its most important gift to New York State's future. Signed, Charles E. Schumer, United States Senator. And finally, an email I received from Commander Christopher Flaherty from the United States Navy. Those reborn are for Christopher Flaherty, as he has appeared in a couple of pictures I have scrolling up here. Christopher Flaherty, along with how the bulb had started when we called first a dream club, and the premise behind it is, anything is possible, but you must first have the dream. Chris is very apologetic that he was unable to make it, he does work at the Pentagon, he was going to try to fly, we did have the, Chris was able to join us for the National School of Character luncheon, we're very grateful for that, but his job duties did not allow him to make it tonight, so he did send an email, and his words should be followed with a proclamation. The email reads, "Dear Mr. Smolinger, much appreciated the gracious invitation to join the awards luncheon last weekend here in Washington DC. With indescribable pride as a Cleveland resident and Central Square alumnus, I bore witness as Cleveland Elementary received national recognition as one of the twenty-nine national schools of character. But then again, the Character Education Partnership recognized this year what those of us who call Cleveland home have known for many years. Within Cleveland Elementary, beats the heart of the North Shore and the promise of our next greatest generation. That promise begins with the world-class faculty that bring the school to life each morning. Though I did not graduate from Cleveland Elementary myself, I've had the privilege to see this transformation during the past twelve years through Mrs. Boland and our collaborative First Dream Program. Beyond the common core of the curriculum, Mrs. Boland and the entire faculty develop a far greater competency in each and every Cleveland student, a commitment to live lives of character. This gift transcends generations and defines the essence of our great nation. I thank so many at forever near death. Supremely disappointed I cannot be there in person as Cleveland Elementary receives its due recognition from the Central Square community, my duties here at the Pentagon preclude a trip home. Despite my absence of being, I commend you not only for the honor of going to our hometown, but more importantly, for the futures you inspire each day. You and your faculty empower all of us, student, parent, and neighbor, to excel in our changing world, and to do so with the highest ideals of character. There simply is no greater gift. With respect and admiration, Christopher Flaherty, Commander of the United States Navy." And now, ladies and gentlemen, without any further ado, I present to you the newest edition of the Cleveland Elementary School, the National School of Character Award. We do have a second presentation tonight for Mr. Jeffrey King, Jeffrey King, the principal of Paul Younger High School. After Jeff's presentation, we do invite you to join us for a brief reception with some cake in the back. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. To you and your hours there for the great recognition to Cleveland once again, and to the Central Square School District. We appreciate our... Now, I want to turn this over to Mr. King.
I'll now be forever known as a guy interrupting the cake. Our region's data for this school year, when you see the data, remember it's based off of scaled scores. It is not a true percentage of what the student achieved, but it's based off of how many points they achieve from each of the questions because the questions are weighted differently. but it's based off of how many points they achieve from each of the questions because the questions are weighted differently. The best definition is on the critical thinking. By using a scale pattern, rather than a straight percentage score, typically each test question is taken into consideration. No test is harder or easier to pass from year to year. With each of the Regents Level Areas, the SASs, the subject area specialists are going to present the data that is specific to their curricular areas. Mrs. DeVoe.
I'm still alive.
Mr. Smolik, I told you too, let's not talk about that though. We'll talk after, no cake for you. With our Algebra II trick results, that is one of the most difficult Regents exams for the kids to pass to get their Advanced Regents diploma. And my teachers this year had a goal in mind and they went, what I feel above and beyond. Eighty percent this year in June passed the Regents from the year before, sixty-eight percent. And the eighty percent includes all the students that came in to take the test, including students that failed in the past, did not get tutored. They were not in an Algebra II Regents course and they just came in to try the test again. If we pulled those students out, our passing average was an eighty-three for the students that actually were in the day-to-day class. So they did an excellent job. If Mr. King could go to the next slide, this just shows you the difference between Central Square and the Region. And if you look at the dark area under Central Square, that's the percentage that scored between sixty-five and eighty-four on the test. And above that, in the gray, it shows the mastery that we had for the exam as opposed to the Regents mastery. So the next important piece that my teachers are looking at now is continue to get them to pass at even a higher level, but also try to get more to pass with mastery, which would be an eighty-five or higher for that. The next one, geometry, my favorite. We normally do very well with the geometry. It's a different type of math for the students and they're either algebra students or geometry students. And we have been very lucky with our students in the past. They seem to be excellent geometry students. And we have a very good staff of teachers across the board who are very, very excited about teaching geometry. As a matter of fact, we had a new teacher last year. It was her first job teaching full-time ever, right out of college. And she had ninety-two percent pass herself. So again, this is from ninety-two percent from the year before to ninety-six percent. And if you pulled those five students out that were considered walkings, that was up to ninety-seven percent for the kids that were in the classroom on a daily basis. And on the next slide, it shows the same, the percentage, which looks very good, from the gray, dark at the bottom again, from the sixty-fives to the eighty-fours. And then at the top, in the lighter gray, the percentage between Central Square and the rest of the Region, the mastery from eighty-five to a hundred. And the last one, which is actually the first exam that all the students take. And this is the exam that they have to pass in order to graduate from high school. In 2011, I believe it was, we did a little changing and we decided to have all the ninth grade students be put into integrated algebra. And we tried it. And some of the students were successful, but as you see, we did a little fixing. And then in 2013, in June, we had eighty-eight percent pass. And again, that includes the kids that walked into the test without being in a classroom. And because of the January Regents being canceled because of Red Hawk Down Snow Day, we had quite a few students have to come in and retake that test in June. If we pulled them out, that would bring us up to ninety-two percent passing. So we are well on the way. Our goal this year is to have that ninety percent. And if you look at the last slide, I believe, you can see the percentages. Not as much mastery, but we are getting more of the students to pass and they need that exam for their Regents diploma to graduate from high school.
Ladies and Mrs. DeVoe, Mrs. Bren, presenting. Mrs. Bren with our district.
I love how you can see our personalities since Patty is the numbers lady and I'm going to tell you the little story. And many administrators who's ever been in my classroom here knows that's how I usually start my classes. So this weekend, I was thinking about what I was going to say today. And I thought about with my classes, what I like to do is try to kind of zoom out and look at the big picture before we zoom in and look at the numbers. So life always has a way of kind of working itself out. And my story came on Saturday morning when Raymore Flanagan was delivering the second headboard to my new bedroom set in my new house. First one had a huge scratch in it and I was just so sad because I waited, let's say, the past twenty years to buy a big girl furniture. And so when it came and it had a big scratch in it, I was like so disappointed that he said, oh, no worries. We'll bring a new one on Saturday morning. So Saturday morning, we're waiting for Raymore Flanagan to come. And in the lobby, these two gentlemen carrying my headboard. And first one walks in, I was like, oh, hi guys, right at the stairs, nice to meet you. Second guy walks in and I, the first thing goes, I know you. And he looks at me, he goes, I know you too. And I'm like, how do I know you? And he goes, teacher? I go, yes. And I go, Mrs. Bren? He goes, no. And I said, Ms. Bedore? And he goes, yes. That's what made it name. And I was like, oh, name, name. Finally, after a couple seconds, I got the first name. And so excited, he was like, oh, yes. And I figured out that he was one of, from one of my first years of teaching. And so we're talking, I'm asking how things are going and I said, all right, Ethan. And I was like, what year were you? What year did you graduate? And he goes, well, let's not talk about that. And I was like, why not? He's like, I didn't actually graduate. And I was like, are you serious? And I remember, I have actually used his name many times throughout my career because he was the only student, and I've been teaching for seven years now, the only student who was able to get through my class and the Regents without doing a lick of homework. And that doesn't happen in my class, it just doesn't. So I have referenced his name many, many times. And just seeing him there in my house, bringing my furniture in, I was just imploring to talk to him. I just wanted, I wanted to talk to him and I was saying, okay, well, all right, if that didn't work out, then you know, what's your plan? You know, how are you doing? He's like, he goes, yeah, he goes, I really feel like I wasted that opportunity of being in high school and all that offered me. And I said, remember Ethan, remember me sitting down with you so many times saying, come on, you're so smart, you can do this and you can do this. He goes, yeah, you weren't doing one. There's a lot of the teachers that were doing that. And so we talked about where he's at now. He's going to a community college hoping to become an architect and you know, talking about what his next step's going to be and things like that. And when he left, I, when he left my house, I was left with this feeling of like, okay. So Ethan was one of these numbers that I'm going to talk about up here. All right, he got through that Regents. He did. He was a smart kid, got through the Regents. But what I want to know and what we have tried to do in high school, and we continue to do this, is that it's not just the numbers, it's not just those kids came through the Regents. It's also providing them with the opportunities to make it in this world. And I really do implore you as a board and as a school district to continue to ask ourselves those questions of, how can we engage these kids? How can we give them the most opportunities to become engaged in the community and to become engaged themselves and see, and see the value in the choices that they make? And I have to tell you, this year I have a kid very much like Ethan, you know, a smart kid, but yet who still chooses not to do work. And that is my constant struggle in terms of, what can I do for this kid to get him through and to get him engaged? And I know that in my department, that's what we are striving to do, is to kind of get past these numbers, to use these numbers as a guide, but also to see the big picture. Who are these kids behind these numbers? So as we are looking at them tonight, I want you to think the big picture as well. Think about the Ethan's out there who yes, are getting through this, but who also need to start making connections too. And I'd love, like, for the presentation earlier today, because I know that we are doing this. And ninety-five percent of my kids aren't the Ethan's. Ninety-five percent of the kids are like Tyler Lance, who's now at Boston University, who writes to me and tells me he's the editor for his newspaper, his freshman year of college. But we still have to look at the big picture and look at these kids who are the Ethan's out there. So, for US history, we have two Regents exams we have to take for, for history. In terms of the numbers, what I found that we have really excelled at in our history department is mastery. If you notice our mastery numbers there hovering about fifty percent. We are getting these kids to master this content. For global, now, I always say, I'm a global teacher, I teach AP World as well. And I was saying global is like the gateway test. It is that test that if a student is not going to get through, typically is the global test. There are changes that are coming to the global test. By the year 2017, there's talks about actually changing it. Because right now it's a two-year course, the ninth grade and the tenth grade. And they get tested on two years of material at the end of tenth grade. In 2017, there's talks that they're actually going to be changing the test so that it's just a one-year Regents. And I think that the reason why they're doing that is because they are seeing it is a difficult test to get the kids through. In terms of, I think where the numbers for the passing are coming from is this idea that all throughout elementary and middle school, they get a lot of experience with US history. And then when we hit them in ninth grade with world history, we're starting to do it with the Common Core. There's much more exposure to world history at younger ages. And I think they're going to see that change over the course of the next couple of years. But overall, I think the strengths for us so far has been working on this mastery. Our AIS teacher I have to give, I know she's not here, but this is Becky Mara. She has really become a wonderful attribute for us at high school, working with our AIS kids and getting those students, and if you kind of look at the numbers to break them off and get those kids who are kind of in the fifty, sixty ranges, she has worked wonders with those kids in trying to get them through and getting them to pass. So we're working on our mastery, but we're also working on the other students as well. But most, I think the most important thing is that we're looking at the big picture as well in all of those students.
Next up, we have Mr. DeVoe with the English Department.
So I guess I'm a little different than Patty in the room. I'm not going to tell you a story and I'm not going to recite the numbers for you because they are right up there for you to see. What I wanted to focus on was what we do in the department when we get the data in June and then how we can proceed in September. Each year, we examine the analysis and focus on the questions that more than twenty percent of students miss. We focus on the skills addressed to the question, why do you think they missed it? And what we can do to address that for the future to help them be successful. This year, what we noticed was that students missed several questions on the listening section. And in the past, students who took good notes were usually pretty successful in answering the questions. What we saw this year was the questions became more inferential and more focused on author's purpose and structure. So we are going to use our curriculum time each month to discuss each part of the exam to reach a consensus on what students need to do in order to be successful and how each of the teachers in eleventh grade teaches that particular part of the exam. This way, after the meetings, we'll have several different methods, tools, and strategies for each teacher to use to help students be successful. I just wanted to say that as the task becomes more, more aligned and frankly, more difficult, we will continue to work harder to help students be successful. Thank you.
Now lastly, Mrs. Sauer. The whole module is in science, we can't.
Hi, again, I'm not focusing on numbers. I'm really looking at, I'm really looking at, like the teachers do, looking at what we can do with the movie. And year to year, every year, what the teachers do is go through the exam, just as Mark said. We look and see where the name of states. We look at how we can make it easier for the kids to get that information. One big thing we're addressing now with all of our exams is vocabulary. We found that that's an issue along with reading. And because of that, we're looking at some different ways to incorporate some literacy stuff into our classroom to try to see if we can get the kids to maybe read the question more differently and therefore come with the right answer. Earth science usually is one of our more difficult tests. Freshmen are not used to taking the science Regents and it's going to harden those for them. Again, we spend a lot of time, a lot of effort getting the kids to the point where they're going to see the information a different way. Again, hearing it to the region, if you have numbers that are pretty similar to the region on all of the tests actually. Living Environment Biology Test is one of every single one of our kids takes. And like Patty mentioned, this is a test that we get a lot of walk-in students to, typically not studying for the exam. Well, same thing here, a lot of it is reading, a lot of it is vocabulary. And we are spending a lot of time, both this year and next year, developing strategies to help the kids read the questions. And I think this is going to go a long way towards helping us improve our scores in these exams. And again, prepare favorably with the region of these. Chemistry tends to be a motivational thing. Kids really miss, we only have to pass one science Regents exam and it's usually not chemistry. So many times by the time the kids get to this point, they are really not as motivated as we'd like them to be to pass the exam. So we're working on some ways to get them to look at the questions differently, think outside the box a little bit, and make this test more of a challenge and get them to the point where they really want to pass it. Not because they have to for graduation, which they don't, because they want to. It's a college career readiness and everything. And again, we compare favorably with the region in this test group. In physics, it's always a move for improvement, but physics we seem to do pretty well in. Basically, what we do with physics is we get the kids to take it that are really committed to doing well in it. And we divided our course up in the past few years into an applied physics class and a regular physics class, college Regents physics. So the applied physics kids do not have to take the Regents exam. And that's what we were following before. We're trying to let all the kids take it. It's a very tough exam. If the kids aren't motivated to do it, they tend not to tie it to a drive. But we have divided it up, but we've had a lot of success with this group of kids taking the test. And that means the better the region there.
Just so you're aware, when you see the numbers and they relate to the region, that's forty-three different schools that basically forward their data to the regional information side. So we're analyzing all of the schools that you can throw a rat in. We're in there with the FBS, the Littles, CNSs. And we're continuing to move our numbers in upward direction. There's actually no reason why we're not spoken, the exam's in front of those other schools. Thank you very much. Thank you to my SASs for coming in and presenting the data for us. Thank you to the board, our district office, and thanks, Mike, for your hospitality.